All right, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. In terms of the quorum, we have everyone here except for the Chair, Phoebe Breseck. So I guess it's on me.
You are the Chair. You want to leave?
All right, so the first thing is public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone, does any public comments?
No, we don't have any speaker cards for items not on the agenda, so I think you can close that.
Close that. And we'll move to the consent calendar and the planning commission minutes from last week.
I just wanted to note on your dais, there is a revised motion for, from your last meeting. In looking at it, I don't know that the language you saw in your packet was totally accurate, so I did a second stab at trying to get that correct. So take a look at the highlighted sentence there for that item, and then, I don't know if you feel comfortable with that, or the other language is better, but in reviewing my notes, I think this would better reflected what your action was on that item. So if you want to adopt the minutes, just note that this language can be added, so we can update the minutes accordingly.
Which section was this? This is on the, oh, the design application?
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the minutes, it's on page, end of page two, beginning of page three, it's the, the second action for the forty-three fifty, or forty-eight fifty-six El Camino Real. You took action, and then there was four recommendations with one of them, and the second recommendation, the highlighted language, I'm suggesting that is a better, to better reflect what your action was.
Yeah, I have a few comments if we want to, on the minutes. So I think, Zach, your suggestion is a good one. I also, on page two, commission discussion at the top, looking at my, the comments attributed to me, I wanted to add something at the end where it said seventy-five percent density bonus is high, but it does provide additional BMRs as well as numerous other amenities exceeding the required code. And towards the bottom of the page, the first action on page two, and Commissioner Bodnar will have to confirm, I thought her no was only on the, the second item, the design, and that we were actually seven to oh on the use permit and subdivision, but I could be wrong. Renee, do you remember?
I mean, my recollection is concerned about the density, but are you saying that one of these I said was okay, and the other I said was?
Yeah, we split it up into two, we had two different motions. One, we, we, the use permit and the subdivision, we kind of all agreed, and so I thought that was seven to oh, and then you were indeed a no on the design, but, but if you don't recall.
I don't recall, I mean.
In my notes, I had it as a six-one.
For both of them?
For both, for both motions, because there was, because one had, one was relatively straightforward, and the other one, there was more discussion around, but if you, we can.
I don't know, Duho, do you remember that?
I recall that, yeah.
So she was a no on both? Okay, all right.
I mean, it's probably worth checking the tape. You were there, okay.
Oh, that's right. So you think it was no on both?
Good to have a better memory.
No, you think it was seven and oh, and then six-one. Okay, so since we have, maybe we should just check the tape, because I think that one was not controversial, so. And then I had, under item number four, discussion, the story polls, I wasn't sure, I mean, you list, listed what we each said, and then, but I thought there was, there was really no action that you captured, and it, since it was just sort of a discussion, it didn't necessarily need an action, but I thought that we recommended that City Council look at that as an agenda item. I mean, we didn't just talk about it intending it would stay, or is that going to our meeting next week?
That, that's part of your meeting next week. That was one of your requests, that you be given an opportunity to discuss that at this meeting, so you're prepared to discuss that with the council next Tuesday.
All right, so then maybe to wrap that up and make it look a little less aimless would be to say, the intention then was to further the discussion with council at our joint meeting. It just felt like we were just talking, to hear ourselves talk, like I'm doing right now. So that's the comments I had on the minutes. Anybody else? No?
The only thing I would add to the, your revised language, is just the, this is really for City Council to consider, from a policy perspective, right? And not, this wasn't for the, I just would make that more clear, because it's like, should the developer consider these things? It's really City Council.
Yeah, because you're making a recommendation to City Council, so it's, you made the recommendation with the following additional recommendations, and then it really wasn't necessary to say consider increasing size and/or bedrooms in the BMR units, and, and this was the part where, in looking back on my notes, I believe this was the correct intent, modifying income levels to best meet the city's needs for for-sale BMR units, because I think there was some discussion about was very low the best income category for a for-sale unit. So that's, that was my understanding of what your intent was there, but you weren't prescribing anything so much as recommending that the council review that.
Correct.
So if there's no comments, I'd be happy to make the motions, if you'd like. All right, so with the, so I would recommend that we approve the consent calendar, which consists just of the planning commission minutes from the meeting of September twentieth with the amendments as discussed.
Second?
Your vote?
Yep.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Sometimes when someone isn't there, they abstain, yeah. So like, we have two new commissioners. Are you here?
Or are you watching the tape?
And you remember better than I do.
She was here. Oh, actually, we're here, right?
But at the time, they weren't members of the planning commission yet, so they would not be able to vote on these minutes, but I think we do have a majority of the commissioners present at that meeting to approve the minutes.
Okay, great.
That's a record length of time to cover minutes. Good job.
If I need to close, I can say.
So now we're going to move to the special item.
So move to the special item, the commission reorganization.
So I would like to nominate that our Chair for this year should be our current Vice Chair, Commissioner Semick.
I'll second that.
You get a chance to discuss.
Anyone like to discuss?
Are you willing to accept our confidence and faith in you?
I am willing, as long as you're sitting next to me, to.
This happens once a year, folks. We get to, we get to enjoy it.
All right.
All right, so.
We should vote?
We should vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. And thank you.
You get to keep the gavel.
Get to keep the gavel, and so Vice Chair?
Yes, we need to nominate Vice Chair. I nominate Commissioner Lee to consider being our Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
That's an honor.
That you're willing to accept?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so.
Discussion. Vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no one opposed?
Anyone opposed?
Great.
So passes unanimously.
Excellent.
Great.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the study session.
Okay, so moving on to the study session, we have a staff report.
Yes, good evening, Chair, members of the commission. This item before you is a design review study session. The intent of this is to provide, this is pre-application, so a formal development application has not yet been submitted. The goal of this meeting is for you to review and provide early design, architectural insight, design input to the applicant on the proposal that is before you. So what you are looking at here, this is a site, forty-three fifty, El Camino Real. Currently, it is a seventy-six gas station. It is located on the corner of El Camino Real and Los Altos Avenue, and it is surrounded on, on, on both sides by multifamily housing, and then obviously, the other two sides are street frontages. As proposed, they are looking at a forty-five unit project that is five stories in height. They are proposing affordable units in exchange for a density bonus and development incentives. The primary discussion shouldn't necessarily focus on that, as that can be more focused upon once the formal application comes in, but it should be noted, as, as currently proposed, the mix of affordable units would, would not justify the density bonus that is requested, so there will need to be some work done on, on the applicant's part to work on that mix, to justify the density bonus request. But beyond that, as noted in my staff report, really, the goal will be to look at the design, the placement of the building, and other elements related to the design review findings. I did also want to note, in my staff report, I noted that to the rear, along Los Altos Ave, it was adjacent to two-story buildings. It is in fact, the three-story condos, and then it transitions to the, the two-story townhomes before it gets to the single-family further down Los Altos Avenue. So really, I'm available to answer any specific questions. The staff report provides an overview of the general plan in this area, which is that thoroughfare commercial corridor along El Camino. It is in the commercial thoroughfare zone district, which does allow for a range of commercial and multifamily uses. And then it goes into the design review findings that are really the basis of the action when this application comes back to you in a formal sense. And on the, the fourth page, there were several questions that were posed to kind of guide the discussion. Don't, don't let them limit you, but to kind of, as you were thinking about the project, there were ones that are related to the design review findings, and I think kind of pertinent to this site, in this portion of, of Los Altos. And one is looking at the scale, is it an appropriate scale for this location, both in its adjacencies to the larger buildings along El Camino Real, and then the lower-scale multifamily and single-family as you go more into Los Altos. Then also looking at the proportions of the building as, as designed, do they relate to a human scale, and do they use an appropriate mix of articulations and other elements to break that up? Then rooftop mechanical, other elements on the top, has that been appropriately placed and screened? And then looking at the relationship, I think particularly to the, the most directly adjacent multifamily, and does this project do a good job of, of creating appropriate relationships to that existing project? So with that, I'm available to answer any questions, or I know the applicant and, and architect is here as well, and they have a presentation for you. So with that, I am available if you have any clarifying questions.
Does anyone have any clarifying questions, staff? Okay, so.
Actually, I just wanted some clarity, I don't know if you have the answer, but in attachment A, the applicant references that the Stanford Housing Project in El Camino was given the same consideration, and I was just, I didn't quite understand what was the comp there.
So that's referring to the, the Colonnade Project. That project, I believe the front half, it did, its density bonus, I believe, was within the thirty-five percent, I need to go back and look, but it, it, it was more in line with the table, the, the, within the thirty-five percent threshold allowed by the density bonus law, and that, that project, I believe, is three, and maybe there's some four-story elements, but I believe it's, it's primarily a three-story building, but definitely not a five-story building, but the applicant can perhaps clarify that.
No, I think not for tonight, since we're supposed to talk primarily about design, though density comes into design. I think it would be helpful as this progresses, and when we do have to discuss that, if maybe the city attorney gave us an education on what the density bonus law, is it, is thirty-five percent, and, you know, the way it's worded, intended to be a floor, or a ceiling, or either? And also comparables of what other projects, like the Stanford Housing Project, and maybe like, the last, since this density bonus law came into effect, how many projects have utilized it, and what is the formula? What is the percentage that they've utilized?
We can definitely provide that. I mean, as background information, the project that came before you at the last meeting at forty-eight fifty-six, that is the first project in the city to seek a density bonus greater than the thirty-five percent. I am not familiar with the specific density bonuses that the other projects, such as the existing one adjacent to this site, or the Colonnade ended up receiving, we can definitely provide that as background information moving forward. But in terms of going beyond the thirty-five, the forty-eight fifty-six El Camino Project was the first in the city to seek that, that type of density bonus.
And we can get further clarification for you, from the city attorney, but our understanding is that the thirty-five percent threshold for the moderate-low and very-low-income units, those are almost ministerial. The applicants get those if they propose. Once they go above that thirty-five percent, then it becomes discretionary on the part of the city council as to whether or not they want to grant that. Now with the project that Mr. Dahl mentioned, I think the applicant was coming forward and saying, in return for giving me a higher density, I'm going to build smaller units than some of the other projects that have been approved, and by making them smaller units, they're going to be, quote, "more affordable by design." So we get the more affordable units along with the units that qualify as BMR or below-market rate units. But again, that's a discretionary decision that we can get you some more information on from our city attorney.
I think, I think it helped, because we deliberated for as long as we did on this density bonus menu, you know, when we were trying to figure out what is going to be the menu, the whole effort was to be consistent and transparent. And if we had a chart where it showed exactly who has utilized it, and what were the, what, what features of the menu did they take advantage of? Was it height? Was it setbacks? Was it density bonus? And we just have that in one place, we can see if we're actually being consistent, and if, you know, we're treating people equally. Like if there were seven people that did only thirty-five percent successfully, and they got other, I just, we need to see it in one place.
So the, but it is true, isn't it, that the, the menu approach is new? That was only adopted last year. So the Colonnade may have used a density bonus, but it was not based on our current menu approach, but they can, they can delineate that.
Yeah.
I did remember, I did think of a clarification I would like to ask. I assume you've had conversations with applicant, and maybe this will come up, but that we now have a fifteen percent requirement BMRs, and I think their proposal is thirteen and a half, so presumably, they started before the council adopted the fifteen percent?
No, this one, you would need, a project would need to be deemed complete before that ordinance goes into effect, which will be, I believe, next week, so.
Right.
This project will be subject to that. And so actually, based on their, there's a minor clarification on their cover sheet, their, their base density is actually twenty-five units, not twenty-six. And so based on that base density of twenty-five units, there are five moderate and one very low, does actually get them above the fifteen percent threshold. So as proposed, it does meet the city's affordable housing ordinance that is soon to come into effect.
Okay. So we're probably ready for.
Yeah, I would just say, the other part of the table that Commissioner Bodnar is asking for, just, would be, that would be helpful, is there were other considerations that we took into account when approving, you can't just, it's not just the numbers, because there are other things, like the amount of open space and all of that, that were taken into consideration, and I know that you especially made special note of that when we approved it.
Right.
And so.
The fact that those should be in the minutes that we just approved.
Right, but if we're going to put this table together, then I think, like, we need to also remember.
What the example brought to bear.
Exactly.
Yes, that's a good, important point.
Okay, so with that, we will move to applicant, who will have ten minutes to present, if they are here and are wanting to present.
So does that mean that I have ten minutes, and then the, our architect has ten minutes, or do we have ten minutes together?
Combined.
Combined, okay, I'm going to power through this. I don't have a PowerPoint, I'm going to use my notes, yeah, thank you. Hello, my name is Angie Galatolo, and my husband and I have been living in Los Altos since nineteen eighty-nine, and we've been doing business since nineteen eighty-five. So we're currently operating three businesses in Los Altos, and then after thirty-three years of business, we decided now is the time to scale back. For years, developers have approached us concerning our property located on El Camino. After much consideration, we've made the difficult decision to retire this location. We plan on operating our two remaining businesses well into the future, and plan on never moving out of Los Altos. Like any proud citizen of Los Altos, we would like to see our corner, one of the city's gateways, developed in a way that is representative of our beautiful city. Because of this, we decided not to sell to an out-of-town developer, but rather, hire a local, award-winning architect to design a building that I think we will all be proud of. At that point, we would be willing to turn it over to a reputable developer or builder. We are proposing a forty-five unit condominium development on the corner of Los Altos Avenue and El Camino Real. The goal of this project is to help alleviate the local housing crisis. Year-to-date, the average single-family home in Los Altos sold on the average of three-point-seven million. A development such as this allows a greater number of people to move into or stay in Los Altos. It allows children to remain in the city where they grew up in, and also allows senior citizens to downsize and remain in Los Altos. It keeps families intact. Believe me, I know, we have three young daughters, all recently married, I know how hard it is for them to, to remain in Los Altos. This development will also give the local labor force a chance to live in the city where they work. It is well-known that many communities in California are facing a major housing shortage, and nowhere is it more serious than the Bay Area. I understand that each city determines density programs using different methods, but regardless of the method used, the need to increase multifamily housing units must be a priority of every Bay Area city, including a Los Altos. According to an article published in the Mercury News dated February first, two thousand eighteen, nearly all city and counties in California, ninety-seven point-six percent, are failing to approve the housing needed to keep pace with population growth. The state's housing department released lists showing that more than five hundred cities and counties are not tracked to meet the guidelines for the development of market-rate housing, affordable housing, or both. The general plan of Los Altos identifies need for five hundred fifty-two additional multifamily housing units between now and two thousand twenty-three. These forty-five units will not bridge that need, but at least they are stepping in the right direction. This one development covers less than ten percent of the city's projecting housing needs. I understand that traffic is a major concern when proposing a development such as this. The good news is, we will drastically reduce traffic by sixty-seven percent per day. In other words, a reduction of seven hundred seventy-one trips per day, which is unusual for a residential development. Also, a bus route stops directly in front of the project, which also aids in reduction of traffic. Lastly, we have always intended to have a neighborhood meeting. We thought that a study session wasn't a formal meeting, and we were not aware that we would be publicly noticed, so we apologize for not scheduling one beforehand. And we intend to submit our formal application immediately. And now I'd like to introduce our award-winning architect, Alex Fidel.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Alex Seidel. Our firm is Seidel Architects, San Francisco. Our practice focuses on housing throughout the Bay Area, and by way of background, I've had the opportunity to work with your commission in the past on several projects. The first project we worked on with you in this community was at Los Altos Gardens, the mixed-use piece on San Antonio Road, and then more recently, we were the architects for Colonnade. So I have that background with several projects that I think are similarly situated in the city, where we were coming in and proposing a higher-density solution, where there were two, two-story and single-story houses immediately adjacent to those sites. This site is similarly positioned in an appropriate location for higher density on the El Camino Real corridor. Thank you. Just to summarize the project, it is in the CT zoning, it's about a two-thirds of an acre lot on the corner, sixty-eight dwelling units per acre. That actually compares very closely to the density of Colonnade. I think that's kind of the analogy to Colonnade, which is about sixty-five units per acre by reference. The building covers about fifty percent of the site, so you have a reasonable amount of open space, and the general height is fifty-five feet, with some mechanical spaces going above that. Okay, now, if I can figure out how to advance this. Thank you. Ground floor plan, the basic planning concept is an L-shaped building, and having an open space courtyard in the center of the site, which is helpful for the adjacent residential, maintaining a twenty-five-foot setback to El Camino and fifteen-feet-long Los Altos We have a talented landscape architect on our team, Reed Jiland, out of Sonoma, and they have some really interesting concepts for amenitizing and landscaping the courtyard. No pool is proposed, though. So this is a, a section that moves from El Camino Real on the right into the block, and you can see the single-family all the way on the left. You can see a dash line where the CT zone begins, and then, as you're probably aware, there's townhouses, and then a three-story building immediately adjacent to our project, and we're proposing five stories. Here's a look at the elevations in context. The design proposes to use a variety of materials, somewhat of naturalistic quality, wood, stone, plaster, glass, and we would like to do kind of a marker at the corner, so we're proposing Corten steel there, that's a rusted material that gets a really, to our eye, really nice patina. One of the things we're doing, since we've proposed to go to five stories, is we're setting the fifth story back, so in this diagram on the right, you can see the green areas are areas where the mass at the top of the building has been reduced. And here's a, a view from the intersection, looking at our, our thought of how we'd like to design this building. So you can see kind of the stone and the wood elements, the fifth floor being set back somewhat, and more glassy expression to make the top of the building lighter, and also have some really cool units that take advantage of what are expected to be really great views. The ground floor, we would expect to do individual entries into the ground floor units to sort activate the street, so you can see the sidewalks leading in from Los Altos Avenue as, as you go down the street. And then just a little bit about our material palette. Again, stone at the base, wood, it's actually a Trespa material you may be familiar with, because it's really beautiful wood-looking, but it weathers better than natural wood, so, and these are all very high-end materials. This will be, you know, well-built, building, built to last, so to speak. That's my thirty-second, and, but I think I'm basically finished with the initial presentation. Be happy to be in a dialogue with you guys and get your thoughts on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Duho, you want to start?
Sure, sure. I, just one clarification on the, the wood siding material, so it's, you said it's not a wood, wood-based material, what, what is it exactly?
So there's, just in recent years, I'm happy to say, there've been a whole
So, there's, just in recent years, I'm happy to say, there've been a whole series of materials that have come onto the market. They're basically composite materials that are manufactured. And so, Trespa is one of the best, and it's got a very natural look to it. But it's not real wood that needs to be maintained like real wood, because if you try to get a natural look on wood, you're typically using stain, and the stains aren't that good anymore, and they don't hold up. So, it's very hard to use real wood and have it look good over a period of time. So, this is actually more expensive than putting real wood on the building, but it will assure that the building will maintain its appearance over time.
Right.
There's examples. Our office actually has a building that's just being completed down at the corner of El Camino and Castro Street in Mountain View. And there's some of these composite wood materials being used on that.
Is it on the right-hand side, if I'm driving down from Los Altos?
Right. It's got the peats on the corner.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
When you were contemplating the placement of the garage and the ramp on El Camino, did you also consider putting it on Los Altos Avenue instead? I notice there's a bus stop right before the ramp, so...
Yeah, that's a...
My concern is that people, if it's backed up, will be actually in the bus lane.
That's an interesting question. And we did, we actually had a scheme that had the ramp coming in on Los Altos Avenue, but it only worked if the garage was half a level out of the ground because of the dimensions of the site. And so, we made a decision to have the parking be two levels completely below grade. And the only way we could get the ramps to work was to bring it around to El Camino in that case.
Can you say that again? I didn't understand.
Yeah, sorry. So, the setback is shorter on Los Altos, and it's longer on the El Camino side. So, by having the longer run to come, we were able to bring the building down lower so that the first floor wasn't four to five feet out of the ground. You've probably seen buildings that are sort of half in and half out. So, we thought that for this particular project, not having the garage project above grade was the way to go. Did I explain that?
Yeah, now I understand what you're saying. Actually, another question. We've seen in some other projects, use of the roof. I noticed that you didn't utilize it as like a living space. I don't think it was...
Oh, as a roof deck?
Yeah.
Right.
What were your thoughts there?
Well, for a 45-unit project, the courtyard is fairly generously sized, and so, we didn't, the owner didn't ask me to. A number of our larger projects are doing that now, but it could be done. I mean, it could be amenity that could be added, but it's not part of the current proposal.
I have a clarifying question. You'd mentioned the setback on the fifth floor. What is the dimension of that setback?
So, it's probably in the range of five to seven feet. It varies a little bit. You can see the depths vary. And some of those are anticipated to be expanded decks at that level for those units.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you as the architect or for staff, but usually when we get up to these, I mean, usually the first two, maybe three, levels would have a 40-foot setback, and then the other ones would be required to have, you know, up to 100 feet. And I didn't see that this laid out in that type of terms. It's because it doesn't, it's not on R1, or is that...
Yes. As the CT district specifies, no rear yard setback is required unless the rear portion or there's a property line that's adjacent to a single-family residential district. So, in this case, they don't have a minimum setback that they need to meet.
But we seem like we'd even applied that to 4880, and that was a multifamily...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's any residential district, single-family or multifamily, yes.
Okay.
Any R district.
Anyone else?
Can you, I'm trying to understand, again, just going back to the garage ramp, then there's the loading and staging area next to that. And is that something that garbage trucks are driving into, or is that just staging and then cans are taken out to the street?
Right. So, the way it typically works in these type of projects with below-grade parking, the garage, or I'm sorry, the garbage will originate at a garbage chute at whatever floor the resident lives at, goes down into a trash room on the upper level of the garage. And then, on collection day, the homeowners' association will be responsible for moving those bins up to street level. You know, they tow it with a little vehicle or a mule or something. And usually, communities want it to have a place where those can reside at street level but be out of sight. So, that's what the staging room is for. And then, at the time the garbage truck comes, it would be on the street, and the bins go out to the truck. And then, they go right back to either staging or down into the garage so that it's not, you know, it's not sitting out there occupying space in front of the building waiting for collection.
Got it. And then, do you know how far down El Camino, because there's another ramp to go down to the other residential community that's...
Yeah, I think you can see it there.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it there.
That's, I mean, if I just eyeball that, that's probably 45, 50 feet down the street.
Okay. And basically, that difference between whatever the set, what is it, 20, roughly 24 feet from El Camino and 15 from Los Altos, and that 10 feet, just the ramp gets too steep?
Yeah.
Can it work? Okay. And then, what exactly is the five-foot encroachment on the Los Altos Avenue?
Oh, so, yeah, I know that came up in the staff report. So, those were patios, you know, maybe with the three-and-a-half-foot enclosure, fence enclosure. It was sort of going to that idea of having a direct entry from the street into those units. Those are not something that have to be there. They might be something that would be nice to be there, but it's a very low-scale element. So, I think what the staff report was pointing out is that that front fence was 10 feet from the property line, but the primary building face is 15 feet back.
Okay. So, it's just, it's not an elevated, is it an elevated deck, or it's just fencing around?
No, it's at grade. The fence is, say, three-and-a-half feet above grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe with a gate.
Perfect. Anyone else?
And you said that that's not a required means of equals for those units?
No.
Right.
No, it's not. And so, you know, if you had some feelings about how you didn't want it there, or you wanted it to look another way, that's fine. You can give us your feedback on that.
Okay.
I have another question. There's a lot of, in this photo in particular, a lot of greenery separating your project from the multifamily. Is that, are those existing trees on the multifamily property, or are they on your property? Trying to...
They're on the adjacent property. They are existing. And this is, this is a Google Map image that we just pulled off the internet.
Got it.
Maybe I'll ask a similar question to yours, which is referring to the staff report, page two, footnote one. This is talking about the curved, the front corner of the building. So, we discussed along Los Altos Avenue what the lesser setback was for. But here, it says the curved portion, the front corner of the building at El Camino and Los Altos Ave is 13 feet from the curved portion of the property line.
Yeah, so that's referring to that dimension.
So, if that were to actually be a more typical, if that were squared off, which I know it isn't, so this is hypothetical question, but is that then sort of closer to the actual, it looked like the setbacks are about 25 feet?
Yeah, I guess...
Is that a function of there being a curve there, I guess, is the question?
Well, it's, yeah, that's a pretty big, broad curve coming in on both sides. You can see that the hotel across the street also gets closer to the street there. So, I guess when we were laying it out, you know, if you took a 25-foot setback line parallel to El Camino Real, we interpreted that as the setback, and we took a 15-foot line along Los Altos. But if, you know, depending on if there's sensitivity about that, you know, you can let us know.
Okay. All right, good.
For the loading and the staging area that you have on the site plan, is that, is that something that is typical, or is that something that you explored more in terms of where to place that area? Because the way you described the garbage just seems a little confusing.
Oh, okay.
So, is that, is that the place that you intended to be, that front area?
Yeah, we usually, I mean, it's typical that we would locate that element near where the garage ramp comes out
Okay.
On most projects. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Did you look at having it on Los Altos Avenue by any chance? Because just in terms of deliveries, I mean, how would that work for the unit? I know that's probably too specific right now, but how would it work in terms of large trucks that are servicing it?
Yeah, it wasn't so much designed for that. This was mainly for garbage.
Okay.
And so, I think that's a question. We didn't design a specific loading zone for this building. And some projects have them and some don't, but because this is a for-sale project and it's relatively small, the, one of the purposes of zoning is, or the loading zones is for move-in, move-out. And when we do, most of our projects are apartments. And some of them are, you know, like, Colonade's an average-sized one.
Sure.
They have people moving in and out every week. This project won't, presumably. People are going to buy, and they're going to be there. So, our thought was that the loading would probably be done from Los Altos Avenue, from the street, you know, from the curb side. And so, that does happen in smaller projects quite frequently. But it's a good question.
Okay. Is there guest parking?
Well, there is. We were in a discussion with the planning department. One communication we had that we responded to said that the project should have 12 guest spaces. So, we actually, we kept the garage footprint the same, but we proposed to add some mechanical parking spaces in the lower level of the garage to get the 12 extra spaces. But when I read the staff report, I thought I saw a lower number required. So, it's probably something that we need to sort out with them. I wasn't quite clear on what. And part of my confusion goes to when, in the past, when we've used the state density bonus, the density bonus has a parking ratio, and then it sort of seems to supersede the local parking ratio, but I'm not sure if that's the case here or not. So, we would like to have the opportunity to work with staff to, we can, if necessary, we can accommodate them. If they're not required, probably not do them.
Okay. But in terms of, you know, FedEx, UPS delivery, any of that, there's no accommodation for that type of delivery?
No, currently, that's not part of the plan.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, we'll move to public comment.
Just before we start public comment, I just wanted to let you know, I didn't note this in my presentation, on the dais and also forwarded to you earlier in the week, our three public comment letters that came in on the project. So, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of those on the dais, if you hadn't had a chance to read them in your email earlier.
Great. Got them. So, I only have two speaker cards.
So, if there are others, yeah.
Please fill them out in the lobby and bring them up. So, Eric Forsland and then Eric Steinle, if I pronounced that correctly?
Yeah. And I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Peninsula Real Los Altos Homeowners Association, and... And we have a number of concerns for this. I will tell you, just as background, I was the first purchaser there. I have been on the Board of Directors since there was a Board of Directors. I've been the president since residents could become presidents. So, I have been involved in this for a long time. I will tell you that, in answer to some of the questions specifically...
I'm really sorry. There's just people watching at home, and so, we just need you to stay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
I actually did watch some of the earlier videos. I binge-watched this commission.
Are you saying, are you saying it is where it was pointed out, or it's actually closer to the property line?
It's actually closer to their property.
Got it.
And currently, there is an exit ramp from the gas station that is just on their side of the line. They're separated by about 10 feet. I'm guessing that the current one, I don't know, is approximately in that same area, because that's about the only place it could be and miss the bus stop, because they have an entrance on one side of the bus stop and an exit on the other. Okay? And currently, when people come in, very often, they come up El Camino, make a U-turn at Los Altos Avenue and come in. So, that means everybody going in and out of either would basically be in the same spot at whatever time it is. So, that's a consideration. And we put our bins on Los Altos Avenue, by the way. So, that's the way. I'm concerned about a number of things. Peninsula Real is three stories. This would be five stories, and despite the fact that there's the courtyard, basically, what our concern is that this would block out the light and the views for 24 homes in that complex. In the so-called podium area, the main building, there are 62 units. We have a total of 78 units. There are 16 townhomes. That's by my math, and I'm a lawyer. There's no math requirement for law school, so. But I said, Siri, what is 78 minus 16? And she told me it was 62. So, 24 out of 62 is what are the lookout over the gas station property. I happen to live in one of them. And so, we're concerned about light. We're concerned about view. And we're concerned, I would be concerned about the potential of a canyon effect with the five stories and the three stories. The separation on the one side is about, would be about 30 feet between the two buildings, and on the backside would be about 20 feet on the two buildings. And so, I'm concerned with that, and those matters, and the impact on such things as property values. I will say...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, certainly.
So, you said that there are 78 units in this multifamily complex. Are you talking about just, so there's, it looks like, almost like a B, let's say, the B part with the pool. It's not quite a B. The property just south of that that says multifamily, is that, that's a separate?
That's part of it.
That is part of it. Those are the townhomes.
The townhomes are in the back, okay?
Got it.
There's 16 townhomes. Everything else is in the podium building, and that would be a total of 62 units. And 24 of those look out over the...
And all 78 of those units come in on El Camino. Is that right?
The townhomes, you can enter from Los Altos The townhomes, you can enter from Los Altos Avenue. We do have a gate on Los Altos Avenue.
So 62 all come in on El Camino?
They're, they're all front on El Camino, one way or the other. Some will look out over the pool in the back, okay? And others look out over El Camino and/or the gas station.
So do you get backed up on El Camino when you're coming in or...
It can happen, yes.
Okay.
Can happen. Yes, yes.
And you said, all of those units, including the 62 condos, they put the bins on Los Altos Avenue?
Right.
Is that by design, I assume, as opposed to desire?
I, I imagine it was designed that way. There are 15 or 20 bins that go, in fact, they're out there tonight to be picked up tomorrow morning and they just get lined up along Los Altos Avenue for pickup.
And where, where do your UPS and delivery, where do they stage?
We have spaces further down near the entrance and we have a marked area on the curb for deliveries. Also, when people move in and out, that's a place where they can park that's near the entrance and of course, there are elevators for inside the building. So that was, because we have, we have a fairly wide extension. In fact, there was a reference to, when our developer was developing, he tried to buy the gas station and they wouldn't sell. So he wanted to come to the full corner and wasn't able to, which is why we have that strange.
And what was the year? You said you were the first to buy?
The building was built in 2008. It became available, I bought mine in Martin Luther King Weekend of 2009 and moved in in May, so.
Thank you.
Is there, one more question. Is there parking on Los Altos Avenue?
There is. Again, we have some that's marked yellow right in front of our building and the other is not. And then down further, there's a commercial, there's an office building and there's parking in front of that, where Del Medio comes into El Camino Real. So there are spaces there. Many people, when they come, park along Los Altos Avenue.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric number two. I live in that same complex that Eric number one since 2010, so first time. We bought there as, as one of the first, moved in in beginning of 2010. So I share the same concerns as my fellow board member and I'm also in the board, in the board there. I wrote down a few more concerns, or one more concern at least, and that is, first, I really like nice backyard, so positive comment there. I think the material on the building looks good, wouldn't have anything against having that as a neighbor. Garage and parking, the exit, I'm not 100% sure is going to function well, because yes, these U-turns, this U-turn is used a lot. And when that one is a green, all the cars are kind of turning around and ending up along the right side of El Camino there and avoiding the bus stop, of course. And then, please, 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 when you discuss parking in the garage, plan for bicycles. Lesson learned. We had to squeeze in bicycles as an afterthought and that was not good. So the rear setback to the condos, is it sufficient? That's the biggest concern. Is the privacy insured for the rear, the condos to, on the rear side? I didn't see any drawings on how many south-facing windows are in that direction. That will stare straight into the apartments on, at the multifamily behind. And I also want to bring attention to a problem that we have had and that is that all south-facing windows, if they are energy, energy windows and high reflective, they can have a very interesting reflective property in four out of the 12 months of the year, when the sun is actually shining on these windows and the reflection is hitting the, the, in this case, the condos in the multifamily construction that I live in. We have had doors being smoldered by that and it was actually on the multifamily, the townhomes in the rear that was affected by this. So there is spatial kind of concerns. There are light noise concerns and there is concerns about kind of the driveway and exit and so on that we are having in this, like, as, as neighbors, I would say. So that's basically what I had to say. And I got 30 seconds to just answer questions, if you have anything.
Thank you. So with that, we'll close public comment and move to discussion.
Should I start?
Please.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. I, I think there's a lot of things that are, in terms of design specifically, that are being really well-handled here. I, I do appreciate the breaking down of scale, the sensitivity to the scale in terms of the overall massing, the appearance of the massing, breaking that down with the variety of materials that you're proposing. I do question the use of that, how shall you say, kind of some fake wood material. I have seen, there are plenty of precedents for buildings with sort of wood accents with genuine wood material in Los Altos, in the Bay Area. So I, I think that's something to be considered further, I think. I, however, having said all of the, the positive things about sort of the scale, the breaking down of masses, the consideration of materiality and the emphasis or the focus on the corner, which I think is the right thing to do. It is a corner project and I think some special consideration should be given to, to sort of mark that corner. So I appreciate that. I do see a number of, or at least for me, the first and foremost, the concern for me is the scale and the overall height and the, the mass of the building. I'm having a very hard time to reconciling the scale of this project in relationship to the other buildings in this, in the surrounding context. I think it's fairly self-evident when you look at the elevation, A3.3. When you look at the, the top elevation, Streetscape elevation ECR and also the elevation below Los Altos Avenue. The surrounding context buildings for the moment, and I don't see them really changing in the near future, are about half the size in, in height to, to what's being proposed here. And I think the, the jump in scale and the overall height is, is to me problematic and I think, I think challenging. I think it will stand out in, not, not in a good way. I think it will be too massive for this particular corner and in relationship to its surroundings. So I, personally, I would recommend a four, a four-story project for this, for this particular corner. I would find five stories, at least with the current height that's being proposed, difficult to accept. I do also see challenges for the, the garage entry, as many of the other commissioners have, have raised, questioned. I think that could be problematic in terms of the traffic flow and I think further study should be done on that to, to ensure that that's a safe means in and out of the, the project. I am also concerned about the, the sort of the, the boundary between this project and the, the immediate adjacent neighbors in terms of the landscaping, what is being proposed. I see a lot of trees here, but I think further study needs to be done to prove that there is sort of ample screening and ample separate, visual separation to ensure privacy between the, the two projects. I don't know if those are existing trees or there are trees being proposed and they're superimposed into this, into the site plan, but it seems to me that, you know, perhaps it's not an issue. There's, there are a lot of greenery there, I don't know. But I think it would be great if you can provide some photographic evidence or some type of photo montage of what is, what is there today and what is actually being proposed for your, for your project in terms of the landscape package. I, I think the, also, I think the, the porch element, it does look like a, a change in, in level. There's three risers or it looks like you're creating sort of a stoop situation, entry situation along Los Altos for the two units on the ground floor and something similar along El Camino for that one unit. And it's articulated as a kind of a gazebo unit or, I think that could be interesting. I think that could be attractive or it's, it's, it's hard to tell at the moment if that's going to really be successful or not. There's a kind of commercial quality to those units or the, the appearance of, of those units that seem to be a little bit out of character with, with what's happening with, with this particular project and the program. So those are some of the initial observations that I have.
I'd be happy to go next, or Rony, do you want to go?
I'll go.
Okay, all right, I'll go ahead. So first of all, thank you for the presentation tonight and so we understand that additional detail will be coming. So some of what you hear us mentioning is things that are helpful to look at when you have a, a complete submission and then we will have a lot of these questions answered. And I also want to start and say that this is actually a rare occasion when we have more sort of transition and step back with multifamily, the single family to the two-story townhouses to the three-story major part of the residences. Unfortunately, throughout much of the El Camino corridor, we don't have that. We have single family and then we have these big things going in. So you have a really good chance to work and, work with this and make it work well for everyone involved, I think. Just a couple comments and I will say I'm not an architect, unlike some of the learned folk here, so you'll hear some specifics. But in the staff report, they talk about there may or may not be a requirement for an initial study in negative deck or mitigated negative deck. I think, given that it's a gas station, I think it would be very important for us on the commission to feel that that's been looked at carefully. I think the residents, the potential buyers would also, so, you know, if that's optional, I would tilt it towards we'd like to have that information. I think that would be helpful. And of course, when you come forward, I'm going to jump around here, so this is not like a nice, neat, orderly list, but I'll give you, I'll give you my comments as I can read them on my page here. So one of the things you talk about, the courtyard, when you come forward with your final plan, we want to see what that is relative to the open space requirement that we have for developments such as these, so. Because looking at it, it, it may be more than you're required to do or, but it looked like it was all hardscape. There didn't really seem to be anything permeable there and so that, you know, so we're going to want to see that kind of detail when you come back. I also, looking, Commissioner Lee mentioned, Vice Chair Lee mentioned, the A3 and, and I'm also going to say, A3.3 and I'll also throw in A3.4. I even wondered if those were actually to scale because they just look, they look glaringly different. So one thing that is sometimes helpful, and I know this might be expensive, but sometimes people do, architects have done flybys or they, you know, they really give us a good sense of moving in and out of those spaces, so we get a picture. And maybe these are to scale, but those really do look like small existing buildings. So it would be good to have some, some sense of that from some different ways of showing it. Looking at it, the east and south faces looked less interesting, though I realize that there's actually, that's the L's and the, the depth isn't really portrayed very well. But those are equally important sides to the ones on Los Altos and El Camino. So again, regardless of what you end up final, bringing forward as your final submission, those are equally important to be as interesting as I think you've done on the Los Altos Ave and El Camino faces. Maybe, again, depending on how you portray the depth of that and how we get to look at it, we might experience it as more interesting than I, I did looking at this. I love Corten so even more. I know it's expensive, but you know, it, it's just a beautiful, in my opinion, but again, I'm not an architect. I think that, just to touch on the density, we know that City Council is actually interested in seeing higher density, you know, more than 38 units per acre, so I think there is room for that. Again, whether it's going to be up to the level of an 80% density bonus. The last project, I think you've heard some of us reference, we did recommend it move forward to City Council, but they had exceeded on, on at least four requirements in other aspects. So it made it a little bit easier to say, well, in this, in this case, we might. But I mean, from what we're looking at now, I'm not sure that you have that, oh, and we've exceeded in this requirement, this requirement, you know? So I think you'll find that all of us are going to be a little hesitant on whether it's 70% or 80% that you're actually proposing. Again, I'm not being an architect, but I'm going to say that entry, so this is an El Camino address and your main door is actually on Los Altos Ave and there is that, you know, love it or hate it, there is that curve and it almost begs to me for that to be the entry or at least to, you know, the entry is off on the side on Los Altos Avenue even though it's 4350 El Camino. So I don't know if there's, and again, the architects can tell me I'm wrong on that, but to me, that was the sense I got, that, that curve almost demands that that's where you want to be welcomed into that space. So, and I know you'll be coming back with additional detail, as I said, but again, you've heard, you know, privacy considerations, particularly those windows facing in the courtyard and, and thinking of the multifamily residences behind. You know, you really have to have loading and delivery considerations worked out for the final proposal. It can't just be, you know, FedEx can park at Bridge Point, you know? It, there really has to be some allocated space there. I think that's important. And I think I've probably covered, but it does look like, you know, really a nice, you've thrown in some beautiful, you know, the limestone at the base, I think is a nice touch and some of these other things. So I think you've put in some really great elements and, but maybe you can actually work with making it meld in a little more gradually with the multifamily behind it. So I think I'll stop on that note.
Okay, I'll jump in. I'll also go in no particular order, just by my notes. I think the parking and the driveway on El Camino does not work. I think once we heard about the U-turn, especially with the placement of the bus stop right in front of it and how short that, that length is, if we had an engineer, a city engineer, I don't know if we do, I mean, we used to, do we have one? I feel like their input would be really helpful, particularly on this subject. And in light, like, that next door, there's only 62 condos and here we're talking about 45, it's just going to really intensify that, that entry. So I'd like to see it moved and also I'd like to see an area and also the garbage, I don't like the idea of it being, the garbage trucks also parked, you know? They, they have to do it where there are no other options on El Camino, but here there's a really much better... better option. I, I would like to see the green just more interesting. It looks like it's, I'm underwhelmed by the level of landscaping along the street. It's pretty modest and maybe it just hasn't been really developed at this stage. But I would suggest, looking at the example on San Antonio, there's a project that, I think it's got Stanford Medical, they are right on San Antonio and they just did a really lovely job of, of, of doing some great landscaping on sort of a trafficked area, but they, they were committed to it. I like the materials, you know, one of the things, it's, I, I trust this architect based on his prior work in our town, which I really like. And I also, I trust the owners based on the fact that they've lived in, in Los Altos. My concern is that this is a for-sale development and we've had situations where we will identify high-end materials and then a developer comes in and if they are, you know, willing to do sort of high-end development, they'll commit to those materials. But if they're not, they'll sub out the Trespa for the cheap version. And so I would want, since we know we don't have a developer in front of us committed to using these products, to be really clear that when we articulate these materials, they are not to be subbed out without getting our approval. So for example, I, you know, I, I've seen Trespa, it's really a high-end like alternative to wood. We, we, I looked at it at one point, we ended up going with wood, but unless you're going to stain it every other year or every year, it's, it's not going to look good. So, you know, if we, if we committed to these materials, we, they'd have to, I'd like to see them being like locked in. I would like to see a delivery area marked out on Los Altos Avenue. I think that the courtyard placement actually cuts in half sort of the intensity of the building to the neighbors on each side. It could be worse. I mean, it could be blown out along that whole perimeter, but I understand the, the issue. And my concern is, isn't so much about the height, but about the density. I think it's just a bridge too far to ask. And, you know, I think that 10 years ago, when this neighboring property was built, we were building three-story buildings. And unfortunately, because we were building three-story buildings, now we're going to be building five-story buildings. And I'm okay with that because in 10 years, if we don't build five-story buildings, we're going to be building seven-story buildings. And Mountain View is already doing 10-story buildings. So I think it is a mistake for us to continue to build to the standards that have not been meeting our needs. So five stories is the, is the concession, is a big concession in my mind and 80% is just like, I, I don't even know for what. I think the height is the, is the, is the men, is the item on the menu that, among others, that we're going to be giving them. I, I heard from one of the neighbors about the light and the reflection, so I would be, I would like the architect, when they are, you know, putting the locations of, when, when they're contemplating where they put steel or other reflective materials, take that into consideration because it sounds like it's a real intense, I mean, we have people who are, have, have given us some anecdotal information about sort of how intense it can be and what it, what it's doing. So that's worth to consider and take into, into the design. I also felt like the entry was lost, having like not been put on the corner and then just slightly off. I, I was concerned that people will drive by the building and not really know where, it won't be obvious where the focal point is. And owner talked about being sort of a gateway and gateways really call it to attention, some portion of it. And I, I wasn't quite sure where, where to look there. So I would, I would echo the, you know, focus on the corner. That's up.
Our two new commissioners, who wants to?
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. I have a few comments. I would reiterate what my colleagues here have said, but I would ask you to study the, the garage entrance off of El Camino. When you look at A2.0, just initially on, on first glance, the, you know, the grid system and the layout of the garage, just, it appears to be a square. If anything, the distance east to west appears to be a little longer, you would know better than I, but just by eyeballing it. And so I, it would be great, I think, to look at, at flipping that so that the entrance is off of the Los Altos Avenue side. I do like the articulation of the facade and the way that the different materials are used there to, to break up the space. I would agree that the five-story height does give me pause. When I look at A3.4, the section there, I'm not clear if it's to scale or if the setback of this building in relation to the adjacent apartment building there, the condominium complex, if those distances from the property line are accurate or not, but like clarification on that. And then also, the number of units that are affordable. I saw the breakdown on the front page, but I would like to know as we move forward, in the range of square footage for each of the BMR units, where the units that you're providing fall into the range and just a more detailed breakdown of that. That's all I have.
So the initial question that I had when I first saw the project was why it wasn't maybe mixed use or something along those lines? I think that because you have a commercial thoroughfare zoning, I think it could be interesting to maybe look at other stuff to combine with residential. So I don't know if that was explored or not. Density, I don't know if that's going to be figured out by the final submission, but I think that, like my fellow commissioners have said, I think the density probably needs to be looked at if we do decide to do an 80% bonus. So there's the, the height and the setbacks. I think that the setbacks from, from my count, there's eight units on the fourth and fifth floors that would be looking essentially down onto the adjacent project. So I think A1, it's seven feet nine inches and seven feet six inches. So I think that that's, if that's what ends up being decided on, I think that's fine. I think what should be looked at is probably the, the placement of the balconies and the windows. I think that, you know, maybe making the, the windows kind of higher up on those sides so that they're not, you know, being directly looking down on the neighboring project. The balconies maybe being more private, you know, these are just some, some ideas that would kind of be mindful of, of the neighbors. Because I think that, like what has been said, when you're asking for five stories, I think you really have to be careful with how your relationship is with the, with the project next door. I think a solar study would be really good to see how light is kind of, I was going to say shown on the other project, but not shown on the other project because all the shadows would be kind of blocking their views. So I think that would be really important. In terms of the architectural design, I think, I think the elevations are, are good. I think El Camino and Los Altos Avenue, colors, materiality, rhythm. I think the two rear elevations, which this has been said as well, I don't think, those don't seem developed very much. So I think that those two sides are actually really important because that's, that's essentially going to be the, the multifamily project's view is, are those two sides. I think what has been said, the corner condition, I think needs some work. I think that it's, it's kind of a waste to have the lobby entrance on Los Altos Avenue. I think that, you know, you see on the rendering, you know, that corner condition, I think, should be kind of a more dominant, more central, more of a focal point, I guess you could say. So I would look at that. And then again, the driveway entrance, I do think that maybe a traffic study of some sort would have to be done, just looking at it, if you're making a U-turn on El Camino, it could cause some issues. So I think that should be looked at. So yeah, I just, I just think the relationship with the, with the neighboring property should be explored more. So, you know, what would the building look like if, if maybe instead of seven feet six inches, if you did 15 feet in between the setbacks? You know, if you use the court, courtyard space more as a buffer between the two projects instead of having it kind of right jammed in the corner? I think that, the whole thing needs to be explored more in terms of maybe shifting stuff around to be cognizant of the neighboring project.
So thanks for putting together this package. I think the level of detail and kind of transparency at this stage in the game is exemplary. And I, I guess I'll ask, I think a lot of people are focused on the, that comparison that you guys put into this package and since you are here, I just, for my own edification, do you know if that is to scale? And I think you may have done yourself a disservice by including, including that.
There's guesswork there. I think, you know, when we bring it back, we'd like to have a, you know, an engineer give us the actual height. So, yeah, we, we didn't want to overshoot, we didn't want to overrepresent, but it was just guesswork. So we'll, we'll get accurate.
Okay.
And some, I forgot to say, but also if you could do the sightlines, like from what they're going to see from next door and whatever. I forgot to mention that, sorry.
And so I, I think as well, there's some other newer projects, I think that Homewood Suites that's across the street and some of those buildings that you may want to bring into your next presentation that could help put this into more of a context. Because I, I don't think you necessarily showed it in the best light. I think you've got other avenues available to you that may help put it into more perspective. And, and so that being said, I mean, I do think that when you look at it in the greater context, I mean, these buildings are going up, all up and down El Camino, just like this. And we, like, we continue to say, like, we need the, you know, we need to build more, we need the density. And like Commissioner Meadows mentioned, we have a very unique situation here because we do have buffer and kind of gradual build down to the, all the residential units or single homes, single-family residences. And so I don't necessarily have an, I don't have an issue with the height. And, but for me, the, and I don't want to dwell on it too much, but the dense, just the, the density, I don't necessarily have an issue with it because we just approved another project that was very, got a very similar density bonus, but there were a lot more kind of benefits and amenities that were offered in exchange for, for that density bonus. So I wouldn't say that I'm opposed to it, but I would look at some of the things that they were offering to get that density. And, but in terms of breaking down the scale, the materials, all of the things that have been said before by far better architects than me, I completely agree with. I think, you know, it looks good, it looks like it's in context with all the other residential units that are going, residential projects that are going on up and down El Camino, whether it's on the Mountain View side or, or our side. For me, the fundamental, and so again, I don't have a problem with the height. For me, the fundamental issue is the, is the entrance. And, you know, what happens when you have everyone whipping around El Camino past a bus stop and trying to get in from the El Camino side? And so, you know, when you said that it can't be done off of Los Altos Avenue, you know, I would maybe really take a harder look at that and can't versus it's, you know, more difficult or costly or whatever it is. Because I think, as I think you've heard from every person up here, it's going to be, I think it's a really, it's a big concern. And so like if you guys could look at, I think if you guys could look at that and study that harder, it would be a much easier, much easier at least, you know, I can only speak for myself, but much easier for me to, to accept. And so that would be my, you know, and then maybe the lobby gets connected more with kind of where that on, where the ramp is and all that stuff. So again, for me, like, that's not as, as big of an issue because again, it is residential you, residential for-sale product, so you don't need a leasing office or any of that stuff and people can just figure out how to get in. But the safety concerns around, and the traffic concerns around coming around El Camino and have, forcing everyone to do U-turn and turn in and then the adjacency to the entrance for the multifamily next door is a real concern. Other than that, I think you've got a beautiful looking building.
Can I add something?
Sure.
But this, this is to, Commissioner Mosley made a good point about the, the mix of the affordable units. And I actually, and I may have done it wrong, but I looked at where you had allocated them on each floor and relative to the table on the first page. So if I did it right, it looks like we've got four of the nine one-bedroom units are affordable or below market rate. Nothing's affordable in the valley, but below market rate. And those are all the smallest square footage, so the 670s, the 630s, the 695s. So the two larger models are not in the BMR category, but four of nine means that 44% of the one-bedrooms are BMRs, again, if I looked at what you had on the plan. Then the other two BMRs just came, came out of the two-bedroom scenario, so two of 32 two-bedrooms or BMRs. So that meant that only 6% of the two-bedrooms are BMRs. And those were also the smallest, the 1105 square foot two-bedrooms versus the others range from 1140 to 1450 even, and then none of the three-bedrooms. So in some senses, that's good because if they're smaller, then they're going to be more affordable even when you, you know, put the BMR requirement. But you might want to consider whether that's the most compelling mix or not because, you know, should they really all be the smallest units, particularly for the one-bedrooms? I mean, you know, so that will be something that we look at when you come back and that we, we sometimes just recommend, and I think with the last case, we just said, you probably heard us discussing it with the minutes, council should really look at this mix of BMRs and decide if that is, fills what they're trying to achieve. So that will be something we look at and it would be good, as Commissioner Mosley said, to have it spelled out rather than me having to calculate it. So anyway, so I just wanted to add that because she had brought that up. So, thank you. Yeah.
Anything else?
I think it might help, I mean, if staff could help articulate what I think it might help, I mean, if staff could help articulate what were the features that the commissioners thought went above and beyond in the last project that made it worthy of being 75%. I would argue that features that, I mean, is the question that they were providing, I don't really recall, but were these features that were beneficial to the public? Or like, did they create public spaces or?
There was a, yeah, it was like a huge over, I don't know what to say, overage of the open space that they were required to provide, there was a significantly larger amount of parking that was required to provide. And again, you might find, as you look, particularly with a bus stop right there, that, you know, what is the requirement versus what they're proposing to provide? And there were a couple other things. So, yeah, I think it'd be worth understanding. But there were, I think, extra deep setbacks on...
And also, they provided, I think, 16% affordable, when affordable was only 10%, right? And so, now it's, you know, I mean, that was a big...
That's true.
That was a big...
Right, that would strike me as a public benefit, whereas like, more parking really just helps the people in the building, which will make the value of their...
Well, that helps the neighbors too, though. If the parking is sufficient, then everyone, you know, people aren't circling the street on Los Altos Avenue for spaces. So, I would call that everybody's benefit. But you're right, some of the, the open spaces, particularly the interior open space, is really just to the owner's benefit.
Right.
The articulation of the side adjacent to the neighbor was really well-done on that project as well.
And in fact, that whole packet was, as I recall, we were impressed with that whole packet. You might wanna share that as an example, they had sightlines, they had, I mean, they had just a whole bunch of stuff. It just made it easier to review and understand what we were looking at.
All right. What do I have to do?
So since this is a study section, Zach, do you think we've, or Ashley Applicant, do you feel we've given you enough feedback? Or too much?
It's been very helpful, actually.
Okay, then I think we're done with that.
Do you want to close it?
No, because we have other... We're not done yet.
All right, thank you.
So we're finished with the study session, and we're gonna do some other business.
Commissioner reports and comments. We have new assignments?
Oh, yeah, so one question was, your staff...
Yeah, do assignments.
Yeah, Yvonne will probably wanna update our assignment list?
Yes, we have a couple of assignments at the end of the year that we'll update.
Okay, and then, wait, what's the date today? October 18th. So Ashley, have we, have you reported on the October 9th council meeting?
I have not, but I will come back with...
You'll come back.
That one and the next one.
Okay. And, okay, and then I was gonna say, do you have, I see you provided something about next Tuesday's meeting. I don't know if everyone is on top of the fact that we have a 6:00 PM meeting, joint meeting with the council?
That's correct. We gave you the agenda for next Tuesday, so you're going to meet with the city council at 6 o'clock, and I think they have you slated to go until...
Seven, right?
7:00 PM, when the start of the regular meeting begins. I think the target is 45-minute meetings, but the kind of a bookend at 7:00.
And where are we doing that?
It's gonna be here in the council chambers.
It's gonna be where?
Here in the council chambers.
Right, okay. And so, there was, I got an email with the agenda packet, there was a one-page work plan for us. Do you happen to have that with you?
I...
And do we know if...
Bring it with me. The main thing that you wanted to discuss with the council, based on your feedback, was the story poll policy. So that was the focus. There's some other things in there, like the annual housing report evaluation, doing the site visits of past projects. I think it's been about a year since you've done that. There's, oh, capital improvement plan, comments on that once it comes from the public works departments, and any other projects...
What was the last, what was the last thing?
Capital improvement plan.
Oh, yeah.
And then anything assigned by the city council, for you to review.
So maybe you could send just that single sheet, because when I opened up the attachment, it's like, because there's a public arts plan or draft or something, so maybe just if everyone could get that single sheet.
I will send it out.
And I have it on my calendar, I don't know if there's anyone who can't make it next...
I haven't...
Tuesday at 6:00?
It's on my calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it can be there, yeah.
All right, and we don't know about PB, but...
I don't think they're moving it.
No, no, no. With six of us, we've got good representation anyway, so I think that's all I had written down.
Potential future agenda items, anyone else?
Oh, I wondered, wait, just, before you hit it, I know you wanted, and Ashley, this is, I think Renee had mentioned, Renee had mentioned, I mean, that training session on all the affordable housing laws that Katie...
Wazinski?
Wazinski gave, was very valuable. I understand maybe she's not with us anymore, but since we have, I mean, that wouldn't hurt to hear all that again, whether for the first time for some of us or even, you know, second or third time, because it's very important as we evaluate that.
Only three out of...
Yeah.
We can talk to our city attorney's office and have a presentation ready for you at a future meeting.
Uh-huh.
That'd be right.
Update on affordable housing laws.
Right, because we actually, you know, I know the public doesn't understand, but we need to understand that there's actually a lot of flexibility that we don't have. This one, obviously, when they're asking for 70, 80%, we do have some, but anyway, okay.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone need a business card?